Well, good evening and welcome to the August 10th, 2020 Board of Selectmen meeting. This meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. Is anyone else recording this conversation? If so, please state for the record. All right, hearing none. First agenda item is a public hearing for Dudley Supermarkets, Inc., a transfer of license off premises wine and malt beverages to Imperial Park and Shop. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to open the hearing.
Second. Okay, Mrs. Goodrich and Mr. Berth. All right, roll call vote, Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, the meeting is open. I'm going to turn this over to Mrs. Jacobson. I'm not sure who is coming to the meeting today, if anybody to represent this group.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of order.
Yeah?
If we could ask anyone who's not speaking to mute themselves, we're getting some feedback.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. Looks like everybody is muted that I can see, other than me.
So, Mr. Chairman, hi. Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me?
No.
Okay, I just want to make sure. So, yes, the applicant for both of these items, item 2A, excuse me, yes, 2A, and then also down at 4A, has been invited. So I would ask you to see applicant here for the Dudley supermarkets.
Joseph Antonellis on behalf of the Imperial Park and Shop, Inc., who is the applicant for the transfer, is online.
Okay, thank you so much for identifying yourself. So, Mr. Chairman, I want to turn it back to you then because we do have the applicant present.
Okay. Mr. Antonellis, you're the attorney for the corporation, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Is there anything you'd like to present to us prior to me asking for any board member questions?
Certainly, thank you for the opportunity. I think with me also on the line is Michael Taylor, who's listed on the application as the proposed manager of the store. And if I could tell you just briefly, my client, Imperial Park and Shop Incorporated, is a corporation that was formed specifically for the purchase of the three Park and Shop markets, the one in Dudley, the one in Blackstone, and obviously the one here in Auburn. And our obligations to purchase the three markets are contingent upon receiving approval for the transfer of the beer and wine licenses for each of the three stores. And you are the first municipality that has entertained the application. We follow up with Blackstone tomorrow night and Dudley next week. I'd like to thank your staff at the town hall for assisting in the filing of the application in what are obviously difficult times to do municipal business. And we appreciate the manner in which the meeting was scheduled and the, actually, very quickly got it scheduled once we got the application in. I believe the application was thoroughly completed and vetted out. We do do these on a regular basis, so I know the strict requirements that the A, B, C, C will have in reviewing it. But again, as I stated, this is one of three markets that my client is purchasing. My client is primarily an automobile business in Mendon. He owns multiple dealerships and found an opportunity to expand his entrepreneurial skills into the food and beverage industry and is excited about the purchase. He has been managing the stores under the direction of the present owner with the owner's assistance to learn the business since just before we had the COVID outbreak. So his familiarity with all the stores has increased dramatically over the last few months and feels as though he's got a very good handle on how the business was run and how he would like to run it in the future. He has other experience with liquor licenses. He used to own a function facility in Mendon with the old Lakeview Ballroom and then was turned, changed the name was to Myriad Ballroom. So he hosted multiple weddings and other events at the facility and has a good handle on what it takes to properly manage a liquor license. Recognizes that a liquor license is a privilege, not a right, and intends to be very strict in the enforcement of all alcohol beverage rules at the facility. You will see in the application that we broke the price out of the store and the liquor license. That is a comparison of one-third of the actual price for the three stores. And again, I have Mike Taylor, who's been working at the facilities over the last few months, available. We will be, we were asking him to be the manager, and I have him online if you, if any of the three of you have any specific questions. I hope we did a good job on the application and look forward, my client looks forward to improving the overall quality of the store in Auburn as well as the other two stores and here to answer any questions that your board might have. Thank you for the opportunity. Again, thank you to your staff for helping get the application filed.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to open it up at this time to board member comments. Do any board members have any questions or comments on this application?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
This is Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Antonellis, for your statement. We're here specifically addressing the liquor license. Keep my comments to, is there, is there any proposed changes in the operation of the beer and wine sales? And I ask that question because as a longtime board member, I have always held Park and Shop up as an example of the way a liquor license should be handled and the respect that they have shown for their license. They have made it a practice to check the ID of all purchases. That way no one slips through the crack. So, like I said, as someone who's held up Park and Shop as an example, as an example that should be, should be emulated, what is the new owner's position on that?
The new owner's position is exactly the same as the old owner's position. And Michael, who has been in the store, has learned that the protocol in the store is, is that if you're purchasing alcohol, no matter who you are, what age you are, you're going to have to present an identification at the register. He also has learned this protocol involved with the attendant at the register, that if that person is below a specific age, then they have to call in a supervisor to check the ID and ring the alcohol up. He intends to follow that procedure to the letter. By the way, I advise them of that in, in my advice to them going forward while they were looking at the facility, to learn that procedure and to institute it if it was not already in place. I know that in the markets that I go to have liquor licenses or beer and wine licenses, there's many times when you hold that register line up because the young person at the, at the register is not capable of ringing it in. And you don't make that, you don't make that mistake first and foremost. So, there will be no change in the, in the sanctity of protecting underage buyers from purchasing alcohol at the store.
I thank you for your answer, and I wish the new owners the best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Thank you. Is there any other board member comment or questions?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to review, ask Mr. Antonellis something about, it showed on the application that the person, the purchaser, is also in the restaurant business, has a couple restaurants, is that correct?
No, actually, the purchaser has, had a couple of venues that are, have liquor licenses, that those are attended to his automobile dealerships. In one of the dealerships, he has a function room where he's held functions as part of how he runs his dealership. And there is a liquor license there and catering. And as I said, he did at one point have complete control of the Myriad Ballroom in Mendon, used to be called Lakeview, it's on Lake Nipmuck. And that was, again, a function hall, not a day-to-day restaurant. However, you're right, there is the diner at the complex. And on Route 16 in Mendon, my client has three car dealerships, a Ford dealership, Chrysler dealership, and a GM Chevy dealership. In that complex, there is an old dining car that he imported there, had it rebuilt and had an expansion made to it. And that is open daily, and they do have a liquor license there. So he does have experience in delivering food and liquor at the same time, but that's a separate license.
Okay, and thank you. And those, there's never been any problems with any of those liquor licenses?
No, to the best of my knowledge, we've never had a violation investigated either by the local board or by the A, B, C, C.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, with board member comment being finished, are there any, anything further, Mr. Antonellis, that you or Mr. Taylor would like to share with the board before we take a vote?
I think we're fine. We just welcome the opportunity to be involved in, in the town of Auburn. Again, I have a very strong opinion of my client's ability to run a business and to improve property. And if it's like anything else he's ever purchased, you will see some significant changes in the overall cosmetic appearances of the facility and the manner in which his staff is, is dressed and how they operate and how they treat people. Kevin is a person who believes that customer needs to be embraced as part of the business, and I think you'll see that there.
Okay, thank you. All right, with there, no further comments or questions from board members. Hearing none. Is there a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, a motion and a second. Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. All right, is there a motion on the transfer itself?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the transfer of license, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all of the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void. And I request a copy of the Board of Selectmen's liquor license policies be included with this license.
Okay, there's a motion. I see Mr. Berthium seconded that. All right, roll call vote, Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
And Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. All right, it is approved and unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to move up agenda item 4A, Common Victular License, Imperial Park and Shop.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. All right, we are taking the common victual license for, which is for the same applicant. That's why we'd be taking that out of order at this time. All right, Mr. Antonellis, anything?
My first, thank you to the board for taking him out of order. For, usually for someone who's not in front of you all the time, I think that's special treatment, and I appreciate it, I really do. I have another meeting to go to later on, so thank you. Same comments, again, I have, again, strong opinions of my client's ability to run a business. I think that when you go into the store, you'll be pleased. Again, I think the, the aspect of the common victor is a little easier than the liquor license, and I don't think there's much I can add, other than to tell you, again, he will be respectful of the town of Auburn, and I think that you'll be pleased with his performance there.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the license, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void, and that the conditions recommended by the DCG be placed on the license.
Okay, there's a motion. Mr. Berthium has seconded it. Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. It is unanimous. And you're all set, Mr. Antonellis?
And thank you. Have a, have a nice evening, everyone. Again, thank you for your courtesies. I appreciate it. Good night.
You too. Have a good evening. All right, we are going back to agenda item three, which is kind of a combo, welcoming our new school superintendent, Dr. Hanfield. I saw him earlier, but we may have chased him away. We'll give him a moment to find his way back to the computer.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I can see that he, there he is, he just came back on.
Okay. All right. Well, welcome, superintendent. Sorry to, I know this is a busy time, but thank you for coming in and taking some time to talk with us tonight.
Well, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. And yeah, I apologize. Between Zoom, Google Hangouts, GoToMeeting, and I don't know, two or three other platforms I use every, on a given week, I'm not quite up to speed. So I apologize for the, for the fumble fingers there. But, but no, thank you very much. I appreciate it and to take the time to come before you tonight. As you might imagine, we are off and running, have been since July 1st, and just trying to get our kids ready for the fall.
Don't know if board members have any comments or questions for the superintendent? If so?
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Goodrich?
Thank you. Well, certainly, Dr. Hanfield, we want to welcome you. We've always had such a great working relationship with the superintendent and the school committee. I fully expect that that will continue. You've jumped in, you know, feet into the fire with this COVID and learning experience. I've read a lot of your materials that have been sent out, and I sincerely wish you, the students, the staff, the educators, the best of luck in dealing with this. I know that they'll get a top-notch education under your leadership, even in these trying times.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, Mr. Berthium?
Yeah, I just, I again want to say congratulations, Casey. I'm sure I've said it before, but, you know, we, we have been very fortunate with Dr. Brunel and now having you step in there. We have a great school committee and just hope that, you know, you, you feel that you can rely on us for whatever you need and wish you the best of luck. It's definitely tough times right now with, with COVID and everything, but in reading through, you know, what you presented to us, you know, it looks like you got a really good handle on things, and we're very lucky to have you. So welcome.
Thank you.
All right, and I will turn it over to the town manager and for any things she would like to say.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, welcome to our new superintendent. And I have to say, we also are off to a great start, working together with the school department and town administration. We've already had several meetings and phone conversations. Needless to say, much of it does focus around COVID. There are a lot of decisions that we all have to make that are difficult, but I can tell just from the couple of meetings that we've already had with Ed Kuzinovich and the superintendent, as well as his staff, that we're going to have a good collaboration moving forward, as we have with the prior superintendent. It looks like Dr. Hanfield's absolutely very much in favor of working with us and has already reached out to us on a number of different issues. So I just want to say, we're off to a great start for our working relationship. I have no doubt we're going to be able to continue that. Unfortunately for, for you, Dr. Hanfield, you started at such a difficult time that this is the hardest time ever to start in a brand-new position, given all this. And I just think you've done a phenomenal job in the one month that you've been here. As Selectman Goodrich pointed out, some of the correspondence that you've put together has been excellent. So I want to thank you, and I know it feels the same. We feel we had a great meeting with you and Cecilia last week, and we look forward to continuing that relationship. Thank you.
Yeah, so thank you again, and I, and I appreciate all of the welcomes and the sentiments. You know, we have enjoyed a wonderful relationship, you know, as a school district, you know, with the town. You know, as I have said to people before, I'm one of the last kind of, you know, bridges of institutional history to, you know, what Auburn was, you know, in 2003, 4, 5, and what Auburn has become, you know, as we sit here in 2020, even amidst the COVID, you know, crisis that we're facing. This town has come such a long way, and it's got, and in large part has to do with, you know, the collaborative understandings and relationships that we enjoy between select, board, finance, you know, police, fire, the schools. You know, we all work in unison, and we're all here for the, for the same reason, you know, and that's for our kids, that's for our citizens. You know, and I echo, you know, Julie's sentiments that, you know, it's important, especially during these really difficult times, to see the very big picture, not just, you know, on the school side, but, but also, you know, what's going on across departments, you know, across the town. And we're very mindful of that here, you know, over on West Street. And so we're very much looking forward to a very positive and productive working relationship and continuing to be a proud community and being a community of excellence that others seek to emulate. So very much looking forward to the work ahead.
Well, thank you very much. And if you have anything else you'd like to share, if you, if you're ready to depart, we can, we can certainly free you up to pursue the important work that you clearly are undertaking. And we wish you the best of luck and look forward to working with you as we go forward.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Have a good night.
All right, we are clipping right along. Our next agenda item under Board of Selectmen General Items is interview and potential vote to appoint an Auburn Housing Authority board member for a term expiring May 18th, 2021. Board members have the individual applications and additional materials. We were, I did ask the manager to invite the director and the chairman of the housing authority. I'm not sure if they're with us. I will turn it over to Mrs. Jacobson for that.
Through the chair, yes. The chair asked me to reach out through my office here to the director, Lori Brennan, and to the housing authority members through Lori. And Sharon in my office was able to speak with Lori, and in turn, Lori reached out to the housing authority members. I think, just to be clear, it was explained to Lori and to those members that did speak to Sharon, that this is not a joint meeting or a joint vote, as under national law, it becomes a selectmen's appointment after a certain period of time expires within which notification is not given to the Board of Selectmen. So at this point, it is a Board of Selectmen vote, but as a courtesy, I know the chair wanted the other members to be aware of the meeting and to log on if they were interested in watching. So I can see from my screen, Mr. Chairman, that we have Betty from the housing authority, but I, and we have the two applicants who are also on. And I'm not sure if there are any other housing authority members, as I can't, I can't remember the names.
This is Roberta Briggs, and I am on this telephone.
Oh, thank you, Roberta. So Chris, if you don't mind, or Amanda, can you log Roberta Briggs in as caller seven? And then I can see our two applicants. I see Monica and Beverly both on. So if there are any other housing authority members that are on who'd like to identify themselves, let us know. And then if not, I will turn it back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right. So normally, what happens is we interview both members. We may or may not vote this evening to appoint someone. And I'm going to actually open it up to board members first to see, why don't we start alphabetically with Mrs. Charbonneau? And I will ask board members if they have any questions or comments based on what we have before us tonight.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mrs. Goodrich?
There are generally a couple of routine questions that the chairman asks. Number one, what their interest is in serving on the committee. The second question being if they have any time constraints. And I'm not remembering the third question off the top of my head. We generally ask those questions to applicants first to open it up.
Okay. So go ahead, Mrs. Charbonneau. Did you hear those questions? What is your interest in serving on the committee?
I've worked at Auburn Housing for many years, and I just want to help and do to make sure everything goes okay.
Okay. I'm sorry, Ms. Goodrich, the second question I didn't catch.
Time constraints? Are there any time constraints that would prohibit you from participating in the meeting?
No.
Okay. All right. So we've got that out of the way. Are there any further board questions for the applicant? Hearing none. We will move on to Mrs. Locker, is it? I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing your name. Welcome to the meeting. Thank you both for your interest in serving on this very important committee. So the same two questions, we'll, we'll ask you at the top. What is your interest? I know the application does ask that. And do you have any time constraints?
Thank you for having me. So my interest in serving, I actually have recently moved to Auburn. I moved here a little over a year ago. And I am interested in the governance of the town. And I'm also, I'm interested in helping out. I'm interested in housing in general. So I thought that the Housing Authority Board of Commissioner vacancy would be a good place to get involved and to contribute as much as I could. And as far as time constraints go, I do not have time constraints.
Very good. Are there any board member questions or comments that they would like to direct at the applicant? Seeing none. This could be the quickest interview we've had, group of interviews we've had. I do have one or two questions, which I'll ask to both of you, and I'll say just again, by alphabetical order, Mr. Charbonneau, if you want to do that first. You've, you've worked in the, you've worked in the office for many years. Do you feel that any relationships that you may have formed as an employee might impact your ability to render impartially decisions that may come before the board?
Not at all. In fact, I live in one of the apartments right now.
Okay, Mrs. Locker? That one probably doesn't apply to you. Do you have any issues? You say you're generally interested in, in housing. We have family housing. Is there a particular one of those that you're interested in, or affordable housing in general?
I'm really sorry. You cut out during the first part of that question, and I wasn't able to hear.
So we have a predominance of elderly or senior housing. We do have some family housing. Are you interested in one or the other particularly, or affordable housing in general?
I would say affordable housing in general. I think housing is one of the most important aspects of a community. I mean, obviously, for obvious reasons, so pretty much the whole thing.
Okay, thank you. All right. So normally, when we have vacancies, they are joint meetings, as the manager has said. And typically, when we have a vacancy on a board that we appoint, we ask the chairman to ask a question. But it sounds like the chairman of the housing authority is not present. Is that correct?
I'm the vice chairman.
Okay. Well, Mrs. Briggs, do you have any questions in the absence of the chair? Do you have any questions from the Charbonneau and Mrs. Locker?
I have a couple of comments, if I might give those. One of the things, this is, the housing is state and federal. We now have a state representative on the board, and it would be very nice to have a federal person on the board that would represent, that lives in the housing, that is a member, that lives there, so they know what's going on. Beth does know what's going on there because she has worked in, in the office for some time. She does a very good job. I don't know anything about Ms. Walker, except for her resume, which is wonderful. But I would like to see someone that lives in the state housing appointed to, to the board because they are absolutely involved in everything. housing appointed to the Board, because they are absolutely involved in everything that happens there, because we do both state and federal housing. And I'd just like to make that comment.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Briggs.
But my mind is open. My mind is open. I'm not prejudiced one way or the other.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, I'm sorry, Mr. Bertham, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Are there any other members of the Board that are also residents of our senior housing or Auburn Housing?
The state representative is in the housing also. She lives there and has for some time. Getting cut out.
So, Mrs. Briggs, Alice Ray, is she still a mem, is she still housed in the state portion?
Yes, she is. Yes, yeah, she is.
She is currently a member of the Board, is that correct?
Yeah, but so is Joyce. Joyce is the other, and at the top, I can't remember the name right now. Joyce is also a member.
Joyce Lammerow.
Lammerow, yes. She is also a member of the Board, and she lives there. She is the state representative.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Is there anything else from Board members?
Mr. Chairman, if I just, clarification, to follow up on Mr. Bertham. If we could mute the phones that are not. Thank you. Just for clarification, we currently have two members of the Board who reside in public housing, who are voting members. And Mrs. Charbonneau is a resident, as you just said, in housing. So that would, if appointed, that would be three members of housing, which would be a quorum on your Board, a majority on your Board. Is that correct?
Yes. But she would be a federal member, not a state member, because she's in federal housing.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mrs. Briggs. All right.
Chairman, I don't know, do you mind if I just jump in for a moment? This is Julie.
Oh, absolutely. Please.
I just, Sharon just emailed me to let me know what the last question is that the Board had voted to ask of those that they're interviewing. And that last question would, Mrs. Goodrich had two of the questions. The third question is, do you have any special experiences or skills that will enhance your appointment? So that question probably should be asked to both candidates at this point.
Okay, thank you. Did both applicants hear the question?
I'm happy to repeat it if you'd like. The last question would be, do you have any special experiences or skills that would enhance your appointment?
I have sat, this is Beverly. I have sat in on some of the meetings, so I know kind of how they go. And I know several of them.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mrs. Locker?
Hi. So this is not quite on the level of practical experience. However, I am the, as I mentioned in my application, I work for Holy Cross, and I'm a librarian for for the library there. And I work with the economics department. And I have some knowledge of public housing from my work with economic students.
Okay, thank you for that. Are there any other Board member questions or comments? Anything from Mr. Charbonneau or Mrs. Locker? Any last thoughts that you want to share with the Board? Hearing none. I'm going to open it up to the Board as to whether they are prepared to vote tonight, or if they would like some time to think about this.
Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared to vote tonight.
Okay.
I have a question.
I can't speak for Mr. Bertham.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd be willing to vote tonight on this.
Okay. All right. Mrs. Briggs, you had a question?
My question is, this this only runs until May 18th of 2021. So whatever candidate is appointed tonight, if we vote tonight, they would only be on the Board until that time when they would have to run for for election. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. Either one of them, they can, you know, both of them can run if they want to in May, is what I'm saying.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you for that. All right. The Board is prepared to vote, so I will open it up to motions.
Mr. Chairman, I thank both excellent candidates for coming in. But I would make a motion to appoint Ms. Locker to the Housing Authority Board of Commissioners.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that for discussion.
Okay, we're under discussion. Mr. Bertham?
Well, I guess my concern is, and it's kind of the same thing all the way up to the federal level, is is just having, you know, too many people that have already been there and not getting any new ideas, new, for the sake of explaining new blood on committees. And I've really been a big advocate lately of getting new blood on committees in all forms of government. I think both candidates definitely, you know, can can bring something to the table. But I I'm just inclined to lean toward just, we have a new person in town that's looked to get involved. I totally appreciate Mrs. Charbonneau for everything, you know, she's done in the past. But I'd like to, you know, give some new blood a chance to get involved in some of our committees. Where we already have, that's why I asked the question, is, you know, where we already have, it seems like some experience on on the Board. I think it's a great opportunity to to get somebody in there that can share an outside experience, and also that can, you know, maybe learn and develop into a good member of this committee. So that's why I seconded it, and I would make a vote for Mrs. Locker. Mrs. Locker, I'm not sure which, but that's that's my thoughts on it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mrs. Goodrich.
If I just, because I need the motion, but I didn't comment. And, you know, I wasn't going to say this, but in listening to the conversations, I feel the need to. This is to finish the term of Ms. Weston, and who I had great respect, great admiration for, many wonderful conversations with. And Ms. Weston had a passion for public housing that was so important to her. And this evening, although very briefly, I heard Ms. Locker talk about the importance of public housing and the role it plays in the community. And it's, it's not that I don't appreciate Ms. Charbonneau's willingness to serve. I just hear a little bit of Ms. Weston in Ms. Locker, and I just feel it would be appropriate for her to carry on that passion for public housing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No, thank you. And yes, Mrs. Locker, you will be filling big shoes, should you be appointed. And Anne not only served on the Housing Authority for many years, she also served on the town side in many, many different positions. And each position she chose to devote her time to benefited greatly. So not to make you feel like, you know, there's a ton of bricks on you. But yes, I share a desire to have someone who perhaps, someone a new, fresh look at the Housing Authority. It's a very important committee in town. It is not subject to the Town Charter. So it is, it is rare for us to interact. But when there are vacancies, we're called upon to do so. But it does perform a very important function in the community. And the community takes great pride in being able to provide seniors an opportunity, as well as family residents, to be able to raise their families and continue living in Auburn, which is very important for all of us. So with that, we have a motion, we have a second. I'm going to call the roll. Mrs. Goodrich? Mr. Bertham?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes for Mrs. Locker. She will be the member until May of 2021. Please contact the Town Clerk's Office so that she can sway you in and let you know next steps.
Thank you.
No, thank you for applying. And thank you, Mrs. Charbonneau, for all of your commitment to the town and your willingness to serve. And we hope that you will continue that when we have some more opportunities coming before us.
Thank you. And I just wanted Doreen to know, I did work with Anne, and she's right. She was with the Auburn Housing.
She certainly had a had a passion for it.
Yes, she did.
We certainly miss her. Thank you for saying that.
Yes, thank you. All right, with that.
Good luck, Monica.
Thank you.
Thank you both. And we will move on to our next agenda, which is, let me look at my agenda, I apologize. Our next agenda item is a vote on election offices. The Town Clerk has provided us a list, as she does every year, to serve on our, serve as election workers. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to vote to appoint the individuals for the list provided by the Town Clerk for the 2020-2021 year.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion and second by roll call, Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Bertham?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. It is unanimous. All right, skipping along to vote on 2020 Fall Special Town Meeting. I'm going to turn this over to Mrs. Jacobson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And also, if I could have Ed Kuzinovich join me in this, so we can kind of tag team this. We are looking to hold a, our special Fall Town Meeting this year on October 27. And I'm going to turn it over to Ed to explain some of the nuances with actually selecting this date, and hoping that we can stay with it. We may or may not have the information we need by that date from the State. So I'm going to turn it over to Ed, but we are going to assume that we can have it, which is why we have this article, excuse me, this item on here, to vote to open the warrant, so we can start getting the warrant articles put together. But Ed, do you want to jump in and explain a little bit about what we learned from the State last week?
Sure. Can you hear me? Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. So I'm sure as everyone is well aware, the COVID-19 situation has presented a number of complex issues relative to the budgeting process for FY21. So we've been in a holding pattern ever since the conclusion of our annual town meeting, hoping to get some state numbers in midsummer that would allow us to amend the budget and bring something before our town meeting members at the tail end of the summer. It appears that's not going to happen. We have been told that we probably won't see a state budget until sometime in October. The state passed a 1/12 budget for a three-month period ending in September. That's currently in place. And if we wait until the state numbers are sent to us, it really doesn't give us much time to to review the impact of those budget revisions, and bring something to a town meeting member, and allow us to get out timely real estate tax bills, and get a get a tax rate approved. That being said, we've had discussions with, most recently last week, with a school superintendent, and a school business manager, with Julie and myself. And we had some in-depth discussions on what we need to do in advance of the state budget. So we're going to move forward with making some assumptions. We know that there is support with the Governor of the House and the Senate on two of the major funding items in the cherry sheet, that being Chapter 70, and unrestricted governmental aid, which we know is being supported at last year's level. So we're looking at no increases in state aid from '20 to '21. That being said, it's going to create about a $1.2 million hole. So we are, we are reviewing our our present budget, and we need to address about a $1.2 million hole. In addition to that, we know we're going to have lost local revenue, whether it be meals tax or room occupancy tax, as a result of COVID-19. Businesses have shut down. Restaurants are limited into how many people they can serve. Certainly, that's going to impact meals tax. So we are moving forward with a plan to reduce the budgets and to present something at our October 27th Town Meeting. Certainly, we may have to make some adjustments after that. Maybe maybe we have to amend something on the floor if things are known. But we're prepared to do that, and we'll do whatever is necessary in order to pass a balanced budget for FY21.
Thank you, Ed. So, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, given that, we are, we assume that we can have this meeting on October 27. If we find early in October that we need to postpone it by a week, we can come back to the Board for a vote to do so, or earlier than that, if we were able to. But the warrant articles and the whole warrant can still be put together. So our recommendation is that the Board vote to open the warrant next Monday, August 17, and close the warrant on Tuesday, September 8, which is the day after Labor Day. This will enable us to start working on getting that warrant together. On a special time meeting, it does have to be mailed out two weeks in advance. We do have to run the entire warrant articles by our Town Council, and then schedule a couple of internal meetings for all the reviews that are needed. So this will give us time to do that. And we will hope that we can continue to move forward and hold it as hopefully this vote tonight would set it for October 27.
Okay. Are there any Board member questions on this item? Seeing none. The only question I have is, I know the annual meeting was held outdoors. Now we're going further towards cold weather and not as much light. What plan do we have with the idea that COVID might be still, and we may still be meeting under restrictions for the health and well-being of all of us?
That's, that's correct, Mr. Chair. We believe, obviously, by the end of October, it will be too chilly to be outdoors under a similar circumstance as we held in June. So we are tracking legislation to see if there'll be any legislation that will be filed between now and then to give us the opportunity to have a reduced quorum. Right now, we don't have that option either. Right now, we don't have that option either. There are a couple of options that we can look into for indoor meetings at the high school. Likewise, if there are any legislative initiatives towards allowing us to change the venue, not just the mechanism, then we could look at other locations beyond the high schools. So there are a lot of different options that we have available to us, including, you know, the, not that it would be ideal, but we could make it work to have it completely in cars. And again, if you have everybody in their car, they could still be warm, but you don't want to have people with the engines running. So, you know, we've really got to probably look toward an indoor solution, maybe in a different area of the high school that will allow for greater social distancing, and hope that legislation passes to enable us to go with a smaller forum.
Okay, thank you. All right, seeing no further questions, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion to schedule the 2020 Fall Town Meeting on Tuesday, October 27, in the year of 2020.
Second.
Just, do we need to mention when we're opening and closing the warrant? We usually do. That's the only one.
Do you want me to?
Did I get that?
No, I was just going to do them in three separate motions, but I'm happy to.
No, that's fine if that's how you'd prefer to do it. Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthew?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to open the warrant for the 2020 Fall Town, Special Town Meeting on Monday, August 17, 2020, and for that warrant to close for the Special Fall Town Meeting on Tuesday, September 8, 2020.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion, a second. Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthew?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. It is unanimous. Mrs. Goodrich, you had a third motion.
No, I actually combined the last two so that, to save you on doing all your roll calls. So we opened it both.
Okay, sounds good. All right, I believe the, we have a few gift acceptances, all for the fire rescue department. I do not have them in front of me. I do recall seeing two were in memory of Richard Hastings. So, you know, as always, we're grateful that people think of the town and the fire department and any of our departments when they lose a loved one. Does someone have the name of one of them?
I have them right here if you'd like me to read them.
That would be great. Thank you, Mr. Berthew.
Okay, so there's a $50 donation from Lawrence Rowley in memory of Richard Hastings to the Auburn Fire Department gift account. There is a $100 donation from John Hastings in memory of Richard Hastings to the Fire Department gift account. And there is also a $25 donation from Adana Navarro. It's not in memory of anybody, just a nice donation to the Fire Department gift account.
Thank you.
Those are the three.
Is there a motion to accept with gratitude?
No.
Second. Second, okay. Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
And Mr. Berthew?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Okay. Moving on, I believe this is the last Board of Selectmen member item, a discussion and potential vote to postpone or cancel the annual volunteer. I had asked for this to be put on because we've all attended them, and they've always been done so well. And currently, with the COVID-19 and the restrictions of gathering as well as economic restraints, that we would have to modify how we provide refreshments. I had talked with the manager about postponing or just canceling it for this year out of an excessive caution and also with an eye towards the budget. So I don't know what board members' thoughts are or wishes are, but that was the intent when this was put on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you. So I would absolutely agree with canceling it for this year, as sad as that makes me, with the so many unknowns right now. I mean, people are, people are even considering postponing things until after the first of the year. I feel that, you know, come, come May of 2020, we'll have a full complement of the board, who will be serving out their regular terms. We can, you know, whoever is on that board can appoint a subcommittee and will do the, they will do the best job they can to do an appropriate event in September of 2021.
All right, is that in the form of a motion?
I could, I could make a motion to cancel this year's recognition of it, yes.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Mrs. Goodrich?
Did you, did you get me?
I didn't hear you, but I saw, I saw, I saw the lips say yes. Mr. Berthew?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. It is unanimous. All right, moving right along to under Town Manager Items, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Jacobson for the balance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the first item, the Auburn Mall billboard project, I just wanted to let the public know, I did notify the board last week. I was speaking to the mall manager and asked, the chairman had asked me for a night on the Auburn Mall billboard project. And when I spoke to the Auburn Mall manager last week, he got in touch with the Simon Properties headquarters, and we were told that that project has been withdrawn. I was also told that Simon, now that the project is fully permitted, that Simon would be hoping in the future to get another company that would proceed with the project, but the company that had initially been planning to do the project withdrew. No reason was given, and I can tell you that back in, I believe, November or so, we had spoken with the company, Total Outdoor, and they had asked for and received an extension on their building permit because they planned to start this spring. So that, of course, was all pre-COVID. So while I don't know for certain, and certainly Simon Properties has not said any of this, but I would venture to say that probably COVID may have had something to do with the decision, only that a lot of the retail, a lot of the advertising revenues that they were seeking were coming from retailers that wanted to advertise their services. So that, that whole market, the advertising and marketing part of the industry may be affected by COVID right now, and maybe when COVID is over and those retailers start increasing their advertising budgets once again, a project like that will become attractive to another company to pick up. But right now, there is no billboard project moving forward, and again, it is fully permitted. So if and when Simon Properties does find another company to pursue it, it would be back on the draw because they would have to apply for another building permit if they exceed the two-year period.
Do board members have any questions or comments for the manager on that item? Seeing none, hearing, hearing none. Okay, Mrs. Jacobson, we can move right along.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And members of the board, you have a memo on your packet regarding the intermunicipal agreement that enables the town of Auburn to participate in the Central Mass Regional Stormwater Coalition. We have been a member of this coalition for several years now. We were actually one of the founding members. Initially, there were 13 communities, then it expanded to around 30, and I believe that number is still either 29 or 30 communities that are participating. The lead, according to the state, we have to have one lead town that handles all of the paperwork and all of the financial aspects of it, and that is now the town of Spencer. And so, under Mass General law, in order for a community to enter into an intermunicipal agreement, which is a regional agreement with more than one municipality, it requires a vote of each Board of Selectmen. So all of the participating communities in the Stormwater Coalition are seeking approvals from their boards this month and next month, depending on what their meeting schedule is. So what you have before you is another five-year agreement. We just ended a five-year agreement. The Stormwater Coalition, I believe, again, that I believe there are 31 members. I don't know where it stands after this vote, but I'm assuming all 31 members will be seeking to remain in the coalition. The, in light of the increased costs that we're facing due to the COVID pandemic, the Board of the Council voted to reduce the dues for each member community from $4,000 down to $1,000 for this fiscal year. So our FY '21 cost to remain a member would be $1,000. Starting in FY '22 for the remaining four years, it would revert back to that $4,000 per year, which is the amount that we have paid our entire time over the last five years in this agreement. So I'm asking and recommending that the board, we continue it. We do receive a lot of benefit from this. We did include a package in your, excuse me, a report in your package that just explains what some of the highlights are of the coalition, and we greatly benefit from it. We believe we should remain involved in it. It's a great, and actually a model across the state for a regional partnership amongst municipalities to address stormwater issues. So I would respectfully ask the board to vote this IMA to enable us to continue to participate.
Any board comment or questions or a motion?
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, I'll make a motion that the board execute the intermunicipal agreement with the town of Spencer for continued membership in the Central Massachusetts Regional Stormwater Coalition.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
And then Mr. Berthew?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. It is unanimous.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Just to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is, we're asking the Board of Selectmen to vote to accept the wayfinding elements for Drury Square. And I know at your meeting on June 22, the Fagerman Design and Mark Fagerman had presented to the board the package of what we've been working on now for almost a year and a half. I know Shannon Regan is on this call as well. She's our Economic Development Coordinator, and she was really the point person on the wayfinding, along with, for much of it, Adam and Art, our town planner. And I also want to comment and thank the chair, Mr. Carpenter, for your participation on the wayfinding committee. The committee met over the course of, I believe it was over a year. And if I can, I'd like to just ask Shannon to just give a real, you know, one or two-minute summary of what this wayfinding program is, the board to kindly vote to support what the committee has come up with.
Absolutely. Shannon?
Hi, thank you, Julie, and thank you to the board for having me. So like Julie said, I'll just briefly review the project really quick. So we applied in November of 2018 for a Massachusetts Downtown Initiative grant through the Department of Housing and Community Development for the purpose to create wayfinding and branding elements for Drury Square primarily, and then they can be incorporated through the rest of the town if people choose to do so. And then we were awarded $15,000 in February of 2019, and then met with our consultant that you all met, Mark Fagerman. Shortly after, we created a committee consisting of various members of town administration and residents from town. And like Julie said, we met for about a year, we met five times to do different tasks to plan out the final wayfinding element logo. And then our hope is that the grant will complement the Auburn Street Reconstruction Project and other numerous planning and economic development initiatives in Drury Square that we've been working on for probably the past four years now or more. And hopefully, we can use some of the money from the Auburn Street project to implement a few of the elements. And it would be great to have the board's support of our final logo, which was the Town Hall one with the blue background. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer anything.
Well, thank you. Are there any board comments, questions for the manager or Shannon?
And I just want to let everyone know, I'm still here. I just, I turned the camera off because my phone battery was getting low, so I wanted to charge it. So my phone is actually on the floor. I didn't want all of you looking at the ceiling while it's charging. So I'm going to leave the video off, but yes, we're open to any questions, either Shannon or myself.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just comment that, you know, it was an exciting project, great work by all, and thank you for representing us on the board, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank the committee for allowing me to serve. It was a very interesting committee to serve on, and I have to say that the committee that was formed was a very, came from a very broad cross-section of the community and a lot of good ideas, you know, I was astounded by how many thoughtful ideas came from the committee and also Mr. Fagerman, who seems to have an encyclopedic knowledge of, of these type of treatments and a very engaging speaker as well, which we were fortunate to get, get a, get a taste of a couple of meetings ago. Is there any further board comments? Hearing none. Just, just one, one thing. I know we're talking about grant funding the, this element. We wouldn't be funding it through town receipts if the grant wasn't able to pay for it, correct?
Correct. At this point, Mr. Chairman, we recognize that some of the funds that were already approved by town meeting for the Auburn Street Reconstruction Project, some of those could apply toward, toward enhancing the signage aspects of it. And we're also seeking additional grant funding, which is actually your next item on there for the Mass Works Program, which is another Drury Square improvement project that we're trying to do. So through various grant programs, we're hoping to fund it, as well as through the already approved funds to enhance Drury Square and the reconstruction project.
Okay. All right, thank you. Is there anything left other than a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept the wayfinding elements for Drury Square as presented.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthew?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you. Much appreciated. So, Mr. Chairman, that kind of moves into our, our next and last item under Town Manager Items. And this is requesting the board vote to authorize us to apply for the Mass Works Infrastructure Program Grant from the Mass Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development. We have applied for this grant in the past, and as Mr. Coyle will aptly say, he hopes that third time is a charm. It's a really competitive statewide program, providing infrastructure to communities that demonstrate a need and an economic benefit. So the criteria is really difficult to meet. So we're going to work on it again and hope we can meet that criteria, which includes job creation. And this time, we're requesting $1 million to fund all of the design permitting and construction of the project. And enclosed is a explanation of what we're seeking to do, but we're looking to enhance Breutherton Way as a entry in and access point into the mall, connecting one side of Drury Square with the other side of Drury Square in the intersection near the mall and the fire station, and doing some enhanced sidewalks, bike paths, as well as an island, trying to reduce down in certain sections from the current very wide four lanes down to two, but maintaining the turning, turning lanes, so to speak. So we would be able to utilize, again, some of this funding as well for signage, because you do need to have wayfinding signage. So this would help implement some of the wayfinding. So this would help implement some of the wayfinding items as well. So that's pretty much the summary of what the grant is. We are required to put in a, there is a match of $200,000, and I can turn to Ed to explain that, but we have a plan, if we get the grant, for where those funds would come from.
Okay. Mr. Kazanovich?
Thank you, Julie, and through the Chair. So part of our match would come potentially from some various funding sources, all depending on level of contribution. So right now, one option would be, if allowable, to use a portion of the Chapter 90 funds that we receive annually. We could also consider the use of a portion of free cash, once that number is known, like we typically do, under the current financial policy. And we could always use a portion of local tax funds under our road reconstruction program, which has currently about $535,000. But certainly, we have to consider, potentially a combination of any three of those. Certainly, we're cognizant of the fact that we are facing some difficult times, and road reconstruction money may not be a viable option for the upcoming year. And all depends on the timing of any such action that's required on behalf of the town. So we are currently looking at those funding sources. I probably won't have a certification of free cash probably for about another month, but certainly, it looks like we are going to finish in positive numbers for year-end 2020. Still have a lot of work to do to close out the books, but it's looking favorable right now. So Julie, that's what we're looking at, and certainly, we will continue to look at any other potential options that may become available.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anything for Mrs. Jacobson?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any board comments or concerns? Mrs. Goodrich, I see the green.
I'm just ready for a motion when you are.
Okay. So I'm just going to say that I'm prepared to support authorizing filing it. I am not prepared to authorize an expenditure because of the uncertainty of our finances. I think we need to be cautious, and that's how I would, that is what I will support for this item.
For you to the Town Manager. Ms. Jacobson, I'm assuming that the only timeline that we're on is getting this filed?
Correct. The grant is due at the end of August. I'm going to move over to my desk and check the certification, but I believe by authorizing us to file it, we are committing to the match. But once again, if we are approved for the grant, and then we don't have the match or the match is not approved, then we can turn the grant down. But at this point, to put in the application, we have to put in that the town would provide a match.
Yes, Mr. Berthew.
So hearing that, as long as we can, you know, reject the grant providing, if we don't have the funding for the match, I'm okay with going forward with going for the grant. How do you feel about that, where we can back out?
I'm concerned, and as board members know, I have a very different point of view on free cash than our policy states, and I believe we should be putting money aside, especially when we're looking at a potential building project in the near future. That's money right there that could definitely go towards a very expensive project. So I would, if the Town Manager would commit to coming back to the Board, then perhaps I would be comfortable with that prior to and having a discussion as to whether we should accept that at that time.
Obviously, yes, I'm more than happy to come back to the Board. Do keep in mind that we also can use the local funding that's already been, or that has been approved for allocating funds to our roads, because this is one of our roads. So that money has already, you know, that could be one of the sources without even having to go to free cash. We were just looking at all of our options. And the other option is using the Chapter 90 money that comes from the state. We're just trying to figure out now if we are allowed to use state funds as a match for another state grant. If we are, then that potentially, it's money that's given to the town from the state for roadway improvements. So if we can use that, that is the other option.
Well, I think, I know we have town meeting authorization for, is it 1.2 million? I don't know that we necessarily should be thinking that we should be spending 1.2 million on that with the economics that we're looking at. So I guess that's my other kind of point of view. You know, I understand town meeting voted during a very different economic time, and my concern is about being able to take care of essential projects and people in town. So I do know that that is something that I wholeheartedly supported, and still, if things turn around, I would support that, but I'm not comfortable spending, even though we have authorization for those type of things, because that's a bonding issue and we have considerable debt, as it is.
Right. And for the Chair, I understand, maybe I misspoke also when I said the town meeting approved, I meant the $525,000 that we generally put each year toward our roads.
Okay.
So I agree that the 1.2 million, you know, it's our intent to hopefully not have to spend all of that. Again, it could be a revenue source. I think what we have to do is look and see if we're going to get the grant. Again, we've applied three times. This will be the third time for this particular section. We've also applied in the past for a culvert replacement on Sword Street for $1 million, and we were not able to secure the grant at that time. But again, the work that we're applying for is work that at some point is going to have to be done. So if we don't come up with the $200,000 match, some of this work, we would have to reduce the scope of the project, but at some point, the town will have to put money into that section on its own anyway. This is just an enhancement of it. So I think, Ed, you'd probably be comfortable as well if I said we would come back to the Board with our funding plan if we were to be approved for the grant.
Excuse me.
Yeah, I would have no problem doing that, Julie.
All right. Mrs. Goodrich, are you comfortable putting that in your motion?
Yes, I am.
Okay. All right. Then we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we authorize the Mass Works Infrastructure Program Grant application from the Mass Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development, and if approved, the Town Manager come back to the Board of Selectmen with a funding plan before accepting and expending funds.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthew?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. It is unanimous. Thank you. Is that your last item, Mrs. Jacobson?
That is it. Thank you.
Did you have anything else? I'm not trying to rub, I just, I wrote it down on a piece of paper, and I'm like, is that the end? Do you have anything else before?
No, I think we're all set at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We have no Board of Selectmen items, but as with custom, we usually ask board members if they have anything that they'd like to share.
Absolutely. Mr. Chairman, I did think of one thing, if it's okay. Shortly before this board meeting started, we received a call from the state, and I know tomorrow, the state is going to be talking about different, you know, as they do every week and every day, different COVID plans. But I do want to just mention, for anyone who was curious as to why, so our numbers last week, we have been very stable on our reporting. Two, let's see, two weeks ago, we reported two new cases. Last week, we reported nine. And as of today, this afternoon, we only have one this week. We still have two more days to go. So last week, there was a little spike. And I do want to let everyone know, our Board of Health is on top of that. They've done the contact tracing for it, and it was not in any one place that would cause us concern, although I would say there were one household that actually had four cases. So that accounts for almost half of all the new cases that we got last week. So we don't want the public to be alarmed, but we absolutely want the public to just keep in mind that we still are in a COVID global pandemic here, and people have to continue to wash their hands, to wear masks, to social distance. The Governor did come out with new and revised gatherings order that are now in effect. I believe that was just the other day, that that came out, and I'm not sure exactly what the effective date of that is, but it is, I believe it's today. So just, we urge the public to continue to take all precautions, to please social distance, whether it's at your own home or at a public place, and to take all precautions, even when you're into stores and restaurants that are allowed to be open under Phase One and Phase Two, as well as revised gathering. It's just a really good idea to still be very, very cautious, and hopefully only go out into public places when you need to. The state has done a great job in trying to keep the numbers down. They're going to continue to try to do that. But we all recognize that there are other states that are not doing as well as Massachusetts, and there may be some infiltration back into the state as people travel more. So we just want everyone to please just continue to be diligent, and when you do travel, just take every precaution that you can. Thank you.
Well, thank you. All right. I think our last item are minutes from, we have, what, one, two, three, four, five sets of minutes, starting with May 26th. Are there any omissions or corrections? Seeing none, June 4th. Seeing none, June 8th. June 22nd and June 29th. Okay. We'll accept them as prepared with our thanks. And if there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay. Mrs. Goodrich?
Yes.
Mr. Berthew?
Yes.
All right. The chair votes yes. This meeting stands adjourned. Thanks, guys. Have a good rest of the month.
Thank you.
Good night.
You too. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.